Good morning, everyone. It is now 10:00 AM. We're going to start Town Meeting Day. Welcome to Vermont's 234th Town Meeting Day this year. For those who don't know me, my name is John West, and I had the privilege of being the moderator for the last couple of years. I'd like to thank you all for attending today, and also thank all the town officials for their service to the town. So as I've done every other year, we're going to cover the basic rules of the meeting. First main rule, Robert's Rules of Order, are the basic rules we'll be following today, except where Vermont state law takes precedence. We, the body, cannot change state law, however we can suspend Robert's Rules with a two-thirds vote if desired. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, and then restated by myself before it is under consideration and/or debate. Debate can begin on the article, sorry. The person who made the motion to move the article has the right to speak first if the debate is asked for or desired. Articles may only have one amendment to it at a given time. It must be finished with the current amendment before we can do anything else with that article or for motioning for another amendment. Not sure if people have been doing this for many years. You already know this, but logistics, I apologize. Once you have spoken on an article or amended during the open session, you will not be recognized a second time until everyone else is recognized for the first time if they have any comments or concerns. And the maximum amount of time is 10 minutes on a discussion. All motions, and that's per person, I'm sorry. 10 minutes per person. All motions, remarks, and discussion must be addressed to the moderator, myself. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you raise your hand. Please wait to be recognized before you speak. Whether you spoke once or 10 times, state your name for the record. Stand if you're able. Speak in a loud voice. We do have a microphone, wireless mics, that will be passed amongst you to also speak into the microphones. Your comments or speeches must be confined to the merits of the current discussion and/or article. You are not to engage with another person who's been speaking before you. Avoid anything that would be considered a personal attack on people. We're just here to get our thoughts out and our concerns. Vermont state law prohibits consideration of any articles that have not been warned. We cannot take on any binding actions under the final article titled "Other Business", nor can we amend a warned article to deal with business that has not been warned. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont state law up to the point we begin working on the next article. To open an article for reconsideration, whether it was voted down or passed, a person on the prevailing side would have to make a motion to reopen for consideration the article, again, before the next article is begun. If there's a concern, the moderator is not properly ruling or doing something out of order, please let us know. You have the right to challenge any of my decisions, and I'm not perfect, so please let me know. Only registered voters of the town may vote at Town Meeting Day. I ask at this time if you're not a registered voter in the town, Bakersfield, to raise your hands and be recognized. Your role today would be as an observer. Thank you, sir. Your role today would be as an observer, and you may not take part in the vote or discussions unless someone wants to make a motion to suspend the rules. So I ask you all to please stand for the pledge allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, for liberty and justice for all. God bless America. Sorry. We'll take a moment for silence to reflect before we begin today on what we're about to partake. Thank you all. The legal voters of the town of Bakersfield, Vermont, are hereby notified and ordered to meet at the Town House in the said town of Bakerfield on Tuesday today, March 4, 2025, at 10:00 AM in the forenoon, to consider and act on the following articles and vote by Australian ballot for Article 2, which is: Shall the town appropriate $450,000 for roadwork? Shall the town appropriate $419...? No, no, we're going over what's in Article 2 that they're voting on by ballot, Australian ballot. Thank you. Shall the town appropriate $419,011.75 for town? Shall the town authorize cannabis retailers in pursuit to 7 VSA 863? There's a select board member three-year term up, select board member two-year term up, Lister three-year term, Lister one-year remaining of a three-year term, Order of Two Years Remaining of a Three-Year Term, An Order of Three-Year Term, Planning Commission Three-Year Term, and Planning Commission Two-Year Term. Polls are open at 10:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM. And now we'll begin the regular Town Meeting Day. Article 1, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Do I have a motion to move? Yes, sir. Say your name.
Most to move.
Your name, sir?
Brian Steele.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second to move?
Second.
And you are?
Ewan Behr.
Thank you. We have a motion made and seconded for the election of a moderator for the ensuing year. Do we have any nominations? Mr. Lawyer?
Lance Lawyer. I'd like to nominate our current moderator for a...
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Mr. Lawyer. Are there any other nominations for the position? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. The nomination of John West for moderator for the ensuing term. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Moving on to Article 3, to act on the report of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement. Do I have a motion to move? So move, thank you, Josh. Second?
I second it, Vera Lawyer.
Vera Lawyer, second. The motion's been made to move and seconded for to act on the report of the various town officers as contained in the current financial statement. Is there any discussion? Yes, Linda?
Linda McCall, Page 31. Cemetery Operating Fund, Maple Grove Cemetery should include Cook Cemetery. And on the grounds keeping for the way I be sure did add that she takes care of Cook Cemetery as well as Maple Grove. And also under monuments moving and repaired, they should indicate that $2,100 was paid to Champlain Monuments. They repaired three of the large stones that had fallen over.
So, I'm sorry, just to ask a question. Is that $2,100 in addition to or incorporates the 42?
It was added to hauling crushed stones.
Thank you, Linda. Any other discussion?
Can I add one more?
Yes, you may.
I think it's Page 17. We're going to see where it says electricity cemetery. There is no electricity in the cemetery. I think that should be town collie. Town collie separate from cemetery.
Thank you, Linda. Any other discussion on the reports? So put, "To act on the reports of various town offices as contained in current financial statements." No further discussion? All right, we'll move on. Article 4. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Ewan Behr, I just wondered, does that constitute an action? No.
It's a review of the statements. It gives you an opportunity to discuss. Let me ask you, because you've done it for so many years. Does it constitute an action? I will quietly put it to vote.
I think that we should vote for, have a motion to basically accept and move on.
Well, point, and there were someone else with a hand up?
Nope.
Same thing? Same thing, okay. Then I will move to the vote to accept the report of the various town officers as contained in the current financial statement with the caveats that Linda had made. All those accept, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, say nay. The mouth of babes. Please note that the...
You're the best moderator. I think that part was taken out of the vote.
I am out. So the town has accepted the report of the various officers. Thank you. Article 4, to elect the remaining town officers as required by law. We're looking for a nomination for the first constable. Are there any nominations? Seeing none, volunteers. Are there any volunteers? Thank you, Josh. We'll go that way. Still seeing none. Oh, hang on a moment. Yes, sir.
I've also had somebody that volunteered to be a constable. Have they resigned?
They are not running again this year due to time constraints. You need to state your name, sir?
Sorry, Pat Evans.
Thank you, Pat. Seeing how we have none, this will fall under the responsibility of the select board unless someone comes forth at a later date or until we can identify someone who wishes to do the role. Thank you. Second constable, any volunteers or nominations? Again, seeing how we have none, this will once again fall under the role of the select board until we can find someone to fill the role. Collector of Delinquent Taxes. Do I have any nominations for Collector? Yes, ma'am.
Vera Lawyer, I'll nominate Kathy Wescombe.
Kathy Wescombe. Are there any further nominations?
I'll second.
Second, and you are?
Not required.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry.
The second is not required for nomination.
Mark wanted two, though, so I let him do it. They raised his hand. We're giving the opportunity. Are there any other nominations? So we have a nomination for Kathy Wescombe to be Collector of Delinquent Taxes. Any discussion? Seeing as none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Appears the ayes have it. Congratulations, Kathy, for another year. Moving on to Grand Juror. Do we have any nominations for the Grand Juror role for the town this year? Or volunteers? Yes?
I nominate Jess Villanue. She was the one added last year.
Wendy, you want to state your name for the record?
Wendy Cobb.
Thank you. We have a nomination for Jess Villanue?
Villanue.
Villanue. I apologize. Are there any further nominations? Seeing how we have none, we'll move to the vote. For Jess Villanue in the role of Grand Juror, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes appear to have it. Congratulations, Jess, once again. Cemetery Commission for a five-year term. Excuse me. For a five-year term. Linda?
Linda McCall, for the record. And I would nominate Ron Marcox. That's the position.
Ron Marcox?
Yes. And he is a sexist. He's a Dr. and I can't pronounce your name kind of guy. Turns us well.
Ron Marcox. Any further nominations or volunteers? Seeing as we have none, we'll move forward with Ron Marcox for the Cemetery Commission, five-year term. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, nay. Congratulations, Ron. Cemetery Commission, four-year of a five-year term. So there's four years left in this term. Do we have any volunteers or nominations? Linda McCall.
I would nominate Jan Mashi for that term.
Jan?
Jan Mashi.
I'll let you say her last name. Mashi, Mashi. I'll try that. So we have a nomination of Jan Mashi for the four of five-year term in the Cemetery Commission. Are there any further nominations or volunteers? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Vote is for Jan Mashi for Cemetery Commission, four-year of a five-year term. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Congratulations, Jan. Cemetery Commission, three-year term of a five-year term is open. Do we have any nominations? I'm just going to look at Linda.
Yes. Carrie Fleeger has been still in that position as an appointee, and he's done well with us.
Terry Fleegler.
I would nominate her.
Okay. So we have a nomination for Terry Fleegler. Carrie with a K. I'm going deaf, I'm sorry. Carrie Fleegler, thank you. Fleegler. Oh, for Lord's sake. Terry for the three of five-year term. Are there any further nominations? No? Okay, so Terry Fleegler. Carrie, Carrie. Carrie. I said Carrie. Carrie with a K. Fleeger. Carrie Fleegler. I apologize, Carrie. I'm having a day. For the three-year of a five-year term on the Cemetery Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. And again, Carrie, congratulations. With a K. Library Trustee, three-year term. Wendy?
I nominate Rebecca Bennett.
Rebecca Bennett. Okay. Is there any further nominations or volunteers for the Library Trustee, three-year term? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. I forgot her name already.
Rebecca.
Rebecca. I can't believe today is the day. Rebecca Bennett. Oh, my Lord. I truly apologize. I had a stressful morning. It's just all over. So we have a nomination of Rebecca Bennett for the Library three-year term for the trustees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay. The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Congratulations, Rebecca. So we have a second Library Trustee, three-year term spot. Yes?
Rebecca Ann Bennett for the record, and I'll nominate Wendy Cobb.
Thank you. Sorry, Rebecca. So anyhow, are there any other volunteers or nominations for the other three-year term for the Library Trustee? Seeing none, we'll put to a vote Wendy Cobb for the position of Library Trustee, three-year term. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. The final spot on Article 4 is the trustee of public funds, three-year term. Do I have any nominations and/or volunteers? Lance Lawyer?
Lance Lawyer, for the record. I'd like to nominate Tennyson Dome.
Can you say that name again, Lance?
Tennyson Dome.
Tennyson Dome, thank you. So we have a nomination of Tennyson Dome. Is there any further nominations? Volunteers? No? So we'll move to the vote for Tennyson Dome, trustee of the public funds in a three-year term. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. And that is Article 4 done. Moving on to Article 5, shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on the first Monday in October? Can I get someone to move the article?
Joey Don, so moved.
Thank you, Joey.
I'll second it, Vera Lawyer.
Vera Lawyer seconds it. Shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on the first Monday in October? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on the first Monday in October? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and it does. Thank you. Article 6, shall the town authorize the select board to set a tax rate to cover the expenses as voted? Do I have someone to move?
I'll make that motion, Vera.
Thank you, Vera. Second, someone?
The second is Gary Denton.
Gary Denton, thank you, Gary. Shall the town authorize the select board to set a tax rate to cover expenses as voted? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and it does.
Thank you.
Moving on to Article 7, shall the town authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Do I have someone to move? So moved, then your name is?
Mary Force.
Thank you, Mary. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Vera Lawyer.
Thank you, Vera. Shall the town authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
And against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Moving on to 8, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund, which is matching funds for our grants? Do I have someone to move?
So moved, Sandra.
Sam, second?
Second, Alex Barkley.
Thank you, Sam and Alex. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the paving grant fund for matching grants? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Overgate. Where's the next project that you guys are looking to do?
I don't know if that matters. The next project is hopefully in the spring, and we're looking to do Academy Lane and the Avenue. Those are the only ones. What's that?
For the resurface?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to the vote. Shall the town authorize the select board... Wait, sorry. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? Article 9, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the bridge repair fund? Can I have someone move?
So moved, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Second. Yes, sir. Thank you, Gary. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for the bridge repair fund? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear to have it. Thank you. We're moving on. Article 10, shall the town appropriate $34,000 for the equipment repair fund? Do I have someone to move? Yes, sir.
Brian Steele moves.
Thank you, second.
Vera Lawyer, I'll second.
Thank you, Vera. Shall the town appropriate $34,000 for the equipment repair fund? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
What's that in anticipation of or bills already incurred?
Go ahead, Josh.
Josh, go. In anticipation of that account, try to carry a $45,000 repair fund, and every year, depending on what is spent, we'll bring it back up to that amount.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Shall the town appropriate $34,000 for the equipment repair fund? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes have it. Thank you. Article 11, shall the town appropriate $50,757.28 -we got specific on that one- for the HF Brigham Library for the fiscal year 2026?
So moved.
Second, Alex Barkley.
Thank you, Alex. Shall the town appropriate $50,757.28 for the HF Brigham Library fiscal year 2026? Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, what is that for?
That is, well... Wendy?
Wendy Cobb, I'm the chair of the trustees. It is the operating fund for the library. Hi there, how are you? I see any costs incurred, salaries, stuff like that, to run the library.
Any further discussion?
Just the report is on page 36.
Thank you, Josh. Yes, the report is on page 36 for those who couldn't hear Josh for the library. Shall the town appropriate $50,757.28 for the HF Brigham Library for the fiscal year 2026? All those in favor, say aye. And those against, nay? The ayes appear and do have it. Exuberantly correct. Article 12, shall the town appropriate $5,000 for the Bakersfield Historical Society fiscal year 2026? Yes?
Linda McCall, on the treasurer, and I so moved.
So moved, thank you. Do I have a second? Yes, sir.
Hobie Gate, second.
Thank you, Hobie. Thank you, Linda. Shall the town appropriate $5,000 for the Bakersfield Historical Society for fiscal year 2026? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear and do have it. Thank you very much. Article 13, shall the town appropriate $4,000 for the fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? Yes, sir.
Brian Steele moves.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Ewan Behr.
Thank you. Shall the town appropriate $4,000 for fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? Any discussion?
Well, I just wondered if there was any reason that fireworks and the Historical Society are next to each other in the morning.
Because we're trying to blow up. It really depends on who fires the first shot.
Just in case emergency, huh?
Rhetorical, too rhetorical.
Any further discussion? You're on fire today, I'm telling you. Shall the town appropriate $4,000 for fireworks for the annual 4th of July celebration needs? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear and do have it.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Paul's family. The Bakersfield Fire Department has a lot to do with organizing and setting up. We appreciate that the town supports us financially for the fireworks, and those are done by a local here, the Kriegers. So the plan is this year for the Fourth Falls on Friday. The fireworks are planned for the Saturday after on the 5th, right over here. And hopefully, we'll have a few more burgers this year, and Historical Society sets up for selling some goodies. So hopefully, everybody can join us to celebrate our Fourth of July.
Thank you, Paul.
The Rusty Bucket. He'll be there.
So moving on, Article 14, shall the town appropriate $20,000 for Cook Cemetery and Maple Grove Cemetery for the fiscal year 2026? Thank you. Do I have a second? Yes, sir.
Brian Steele, second.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Linda. Shall the town appropriate $20,000 for Cook Cemetery and Maple Grove Cemetery for the fiscal year 2026? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? The ayes appear to have it, and they do. Article 15, shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? $5,000 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin... $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. Well, I tell you, I was just trying to be... I like cats. $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County Incorporated. I saw them move?
I move.
Okay, we have Wendy and.
You're one.
You're seconding. $500 for the Cat Crusaders of Franklin County. Any discussion?
And some kids right there.
Yes.
I want paper ballots, but I don't have any in here, so let's do it.
Okay, it's been requested that we vote on this via paper ballot. The ballots are actually back behind Hobie, so.
He says the paper behind Hobie.
Is there a second for paper ballot? No, just this one, she said, no.
I'll second. Need the exercise.
Need the exercise, yes sir, discussion?
Robert Willie, point of certification, is this for that block or is this?
No, just for the Cat Crusaders. Paper ballot. Well, no one asked for the block, so we're going to say go ahead. No, you were in the middle of it, now you can't. You can do it for the rats. Okay, so, yes, discussion?
Yeah, what's a Cat Crusader pull?
Yes Wendy?
The Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, they take care, their group that is a nonprofit group that operates, they take care of barns, barn cats, feral cats and stray cats, they spay and neuter them free of charge, they come to your town, they will trap them and take them and take care of them. So if you have a cat on the property that nobody plays, then call them up and they will come and take care of it.
If you look on page fifty-eight in the town report, you'll find a description for the Cat Crusaders. Go in the front for all of these, you will find, you will find that we require that they supply just a brief description of who they are and what they want to funds for. So if you have questions, just peek at the front, it'll tell you the page, you can jump to the back and look at the page. Okay, so we have a request to go to paper ballot, so what I would ask at this time is we move forward with the paper ballot for official count of the folks here.
Yeah, you're next.
Do I have a certain percentage of people to go to paper ballot? Okay. So I would like an agreement to go to paper ballot, all those in favor to do paper ballot so that Kathy could have the number of people who actually showed up for the record, please state aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. Okay, now we're moving to paper ballot.
Kathy, can I go over?
My name is Kathy. Yes.
They don't know around the circle and don't meet all the folks.
I know.
It feels like that.
Sorry.
This is a fun row.
Yes.
We brought her to your house.
Yeah.
Yeah, she took your dogs out.
I had a fun adventure the other day, took Chester and Juneau out in the morning, or I let them out and then I went to bring them back in and Chester was nowhere to be found because the snow was so high, he was being caught from the fence.
Hiya.
What do you do, do you go shovel?
I know, because if I try to get to that place, I'm like thigh deep in snow.
I got some shoes.
Oh, that's true, that's true. I'm hoping, I know, I'm hoping with the warm weather this week that it'll lower it down, so.
By July.
Yeah, by July.
I think.
That's not the thing that is, that's his speaker, okay. Or a microphone.
This is always a good time.
No.
Yeah, but it's, I've been watching.
How are you holding?
She's doing fine.
She's going fast.
She's doing everything.
There's a block, he's going.
She just wanted to count, she wanted to.
I got a bit of a backup.
Who's taking your shoes?
I'm trying to get out.
Going nowhere fast.
Say what?
Going nowhere fast.
Oh, I didn't know if you were trying to get in.
Freaking out.
Well, I was trying to balance.
That was.
Hopefully this should be the last one.
You know, I didn't think you were the kind of person.
You taking any trips?
Oh, we're gonna go to Colorado.
Colorado Rocky.
Not in August.
Nice time of year to go.
Thanks. You want to go?
It's all set up for a champagne tour.
Okay.
There's four of us going right now.
My sister.
So, hope you guys got that on your schedule.
I do now. Never know what day it is, but it's good to know. Yeah, that's good.
We'll keep in touch with me.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, you got two members that know about it already, so.
Good.
I already spoke to David.
Email.
He's coming back from here, we'll pop him in line. Sorry.
No, I think they're done.
With the paper ballot.
Basically.
No, I'd never been.
No, we've had pushover.
Yeah.
I missed that one.
Yeah, but it's a great day.
Nobody's moving in the town.
We had to not tell anybody.
Well, because they, you tell customers that you went to a bar and they, they, yeah.
Yeah.
Or they think it's.
Does it down?
Nobody's moving.
Nobody's moving in the town.
Nobody's moving.
We had to not tell anybody.
Well, because they, you tell customers that you went to a bar and they, they, yeah.
Yeah.
Or they think it's.
Did you turn them off?
Please return to your seat after you vote. We need to keep the aisles open, thank you. Last call for paper ballot voting. Anyone still need to vote? We're about to resume, everyone? Thank you. So, shall the town appropriate $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County Incorporated? The votes were sixty-three yes.
Right now, I guess.
Fourteen no and one blank vote for a total of seventy-eight? Seventy-eight votes.
Nice job.
Thank you all for coming out. Yes sir?
For Kathy's information, one person did not make it through the vote line, so that's.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Sorry.
All right, moving on. Shall the town appropriate $600 for Mrs. Siskoy?
Mrs. Siskoy.
Mrs. Siskoy. I think it's Miss Siskoy.
It's not Mrs. Siskoy.
I got Miss Siskoy. Listen folks, I don't come from the States, so I apologize. Miss Siskoy. Miss Sisk, I got it written phonetically, anyhow. Valley River Basin Association, after, after my phonetics have been corrected. Yes sir?
Brian Steele moves.
Move, do I have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Sam, sorry, we'll let you move the next one, thank you. Yes?
I thought you wanted to vote the rest as a block.
So we have a request to amend, to vote the rest of article fifteen as a block. Do I have a second? Yes sir?
Yes, second, and then can you list what's the rest of the blocking?
I will. The, yes sir. The request is to amend article fifteen.
Yellow there, the red white over there.
Article fifteen for a block vote. The block would include $600 for Miss Siskoy, Valley River Basin Association, $200 for Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation, $1,822.80 for the Northwest Solid Waste District, $5,000 for Fairfield Community Center, $500 for the American Red Cross, $200 for the Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force, $150 for Franklin County Senior Center, $250 for the Vermont Family Network, $1,567 for Northwest Regional Planning Commission, $2,776 for VNA and Hospice, $100 for Green Up Vermont, $1,500 for Age Well, $1,000 for the Lucas James Williams Memorial Youth Fund, LTD, $95 for Vermont Center for Independent Living. That is what you would be voting on as a block? Yes?
Hi, are you, oh my name?
Please?
I'm Claire Johnson Croft, with a C.
Croft with a C, thank you. Yes Claire?
D, eighteen twenty-two point eight Northwest Solid Waste.
Yes.
What does that cover?
If you look in the book at the, if you, oh, that is our trash, go ahead, yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Mark Remus, I am the maker to.
You might have to put your name in for something, that's what they all say.
And I don't know whether you've noticed up by the old fire station, there is a set of roll-off dumpsters and every Saturday morning from about eight to one o'clock, you can come there and the trash is seven dollars for a bag of trash, but everything else is cans and recyclables and also paper and cardboard and then they also have composting that you can drop off there and other than the trash, everything else is free and it's every Saturday and so that's, that's what we provide for the town.
Well, I was, I was thinking that that, for me personally, shouldn't that go up to two thousand?
They do the counting on a per capita basis, so it just depends on what the, what the rate. Um, they do the counting on a per capita basis, so it just depends on what the rate is that they decide they need and how many people are down.
Okay.
So that's what it is.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Yes.
Ewan Behr, I just want to make a note that Item E, the Fairfield Community Center, if you try to look it up in the, in the front, which page the report is on, it's listed under Franklin County Community Center, and it's on page 62.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bill Irwin, and I just want to share that Item J under this list is for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. I want to make sure everyone understands that this is a very valuable price that we pay for services by the planners and administrators of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. They help our select board with numerous projects, our planning commission, our zoning administrator, our conservation commission, and just want to caution that if you vote for this block and you are really upset, you don't want one of these things, and you vote no, you're voting no for a number of good things that are on this list. So be very careful about your vote. You are voting for everything on that list, not just to get rid of one of them. Just a caution about voting for a block.
If I could, before we go with further discussion on individual items, we need to vote on if we are going to amend it. The vote is a block first. On discussion is to amend, is a vote is a block. Yes?
Just point aware, I believe you have to check with the originator of the, of the initial motion to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes. So, well, the originator in the motion was Kathy. So...
So that's a... No, 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 no. She, uh, you originated the motion to vote as a block. I'm talking about that, there was first a Mrs. Siskoy Valley, a nomi... You know, a motion to vote for $600 for Mrs. Siskoy Valley River Basin. That came first.
But we have to...
But I need a amendment to vote for B to O as a block.
My, my understanding is...
Yes, but that came as an amendment. It was raised by the moderator as an amendment, and so you have to check with the original person.
But we only... Did we have a second to the motion on B, or did we immediately get an amendment? We need... If we got an amendment, we need to address the amendment first. There what? Was there a second?
Yes.
Then we need to address the, the basin. So I'll go back to the originator in the second of the motion. Are you amendable to us amending and putting it all under a block, or do you want us to continue with the basin separately?
I say we do it separately.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Paula. But who, who, who put forth the motion?
For, um, A?
For, for B.
B.
For B. I didn't think we...
Brian Steele and Sam Critt.
Brian Steele and Sam Critt was moving it to a block. Sam?
Please.
Thank you. Okay. So now let's move to the amendment. You're not allowed to go anywhere, because I know you have all that experience, so I appreciate it. I was just going to the amendment. So now to move on to the amendment portion of the show. All those in favor, and it requires majority vote, to move the Article 15, the remaining items as a block, please state yea.
Yea.
Well, that was scary. Those against, say nay. Alright, I'm going to move to a show of hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I got 46.
I got 46 or 47. I couldn't tell if that one person's hands are... So knowing that we have 79 people here, we have 47 that say move it to an amendment, I will gladly let the nays raise your hand, just so that you're heard. Nays? Okay. So, thank you for your assistance. The yays have it. This will be voted as a block this year?
How, what was the number?
Now, it requires majority.
46 to 21.
46 to 21.
21.
And I'll just confirm that, Josh, because I absolutely have it on the list here.
Two-thirds.
Amendment substitute. Amend the amendment. It says majority. M-A-J. Majority. Right. So, it carries as a block this year? So give me a second to find the original part of that paper. 1643? Oh, did I hear it clear? Yeah, it's small. Like, I printed it out in big boy writing. One second, I have to find the B through, B through. Here it is. I apologize. Okay. As a block, Article 15. Shall the town appropriate the following sums of money? $600 for the Miss Siskoy River Basin Association, $200 for Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation, $1,822.80 for the Northwest Solid Waste District, $500, $5,000 for the Fairfield Community Center. That's why I looked down and up first. $500 for the American Red Cross, $200 for Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force, $150 for Franklin County Senior Center, $250 for the Vermont Family Network, $1,567 for Northwest Regional Planning Commission, $2,776 for VNA and Hospice, $100 for Green Up Vermont, $1,500 for AgeWell, $1,000 for the Lucas James Memorial, Williams Memorial Fund, Youth Fund, LTD, $900, $95 for the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
Ms. Melissa Dionne, I am the head of Green Up Vermont, and I just want to say thank you, because every year, people just on their own grab all the bags that we get and clean up and pile everything in our town center, and so thank you. It actually makes my job very easy. I hardly have anything to do with community. With the conservation committee doing such a great job on the trails, and the school is always doing something. So it's the first Saturday in May, and from 9:00 to 12:00, I usually have bags at the library, but the bags are, as you know, at town hall here and at the library for a few weeks ahead of time. This year, we're thinking about doing an event at the school, either a tree planting event or a gardening event, and trying to get people in the community to help out with that. That will be... I'll give more information when we have that planned. But, um, thank you. Thank you for making, keeping Bakersfield green. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Paul Stanley, and would like to report on two items that are listed here. One is Miss Siskoy.
Miss Siskoy.
River Basin Association. The valley isn't part of the name, but that's just a technicality, and believe me, the Miss Siskoy River sits in a valley. And MRVA has had a very successful year. We have taken on three full-time staff people. That is helping a lot. We have a central office in East Berkshire, where you turn to go up into Montgomery. That's working out very well. That was just redone, and would invite anybody going by to stop in, if any of the folks are there. We have taken in an amazing amount of grants. Our coordinator's doing a great job. We're booking over a million dollars in grants for improvements in the Miss Siskoy River Valley and the basin. So, I've taken on treasurer, moved from vice president to treasurer of the organization, so just wanted to report on that, and thank you for your support. Number two is the Vermont Rural Fire... Yes?
Protection Task Force.
Yes. I don't know what page that report is on, but we've had a very successful year with that organization. We installed a dry hydrant on East Bakersfield Road. It's right up at the border of Ennisburg and Bakersfield. This dry hydrant is in a rural area. It's a huge support for us, and we have the Croft right here, who are very close to that. And also, it's Jim's brother that owned the land, Parker, Parker Jr., and we really thank him for, this is on his land. We went from ground zero to a pond there. Gary Draper did the excavating, excellent job there, and did most of the install with the fight work. So, and Parker definitely sends his thanks to Vermont and to this town for supporting that project. So, just a couple of things there, and we thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the block? Yes?
I just want to make sure that people understood that by voting for the block of it, last year it was about $9,000 for this section, and this year it's going up by $10,000, so it'd be a $19,000 statement, between what's new in it and what has been increased in it.
Yes?
Rachel Hough, one thing that's new in it is the Fairfield Community Center. Last year, they did not ask for any money, so this year it's up. But part of that, I stop in the community center every Tuesday, and what they're doing is amazing. The food that they're providing is beautiful vegetables, fruit, whole milk, and they've supported our school, giving us all fall. I gave families, every Friday, we had sort of a free farmer's market of vegetables and milk, and also for the educational program, they give us whole milk. Just elaborating on grants, doing exercise classes, senior meals, and so on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll put to vote the Article 15, B through O, being voted as a block for various organizations.
Marry?
Yes?
I would like to move that we vote on the block vote as on paper ballot.
Okay. That's fine. Do I have a second?
Only the second one.
Do I have a second for paper ballot?
David Walker.
Thank you, David. Alright, we have a vote to move to paper ballot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay?
Nay.
Oh, goodness. Okay. Show of hands. All those in favor, please... Yes?
If, if it's supposed to paper ballot, and we need a two-thirds majority for this to pass, I think that's a bad idea. I think we're going to turn down the things that this community, that this community needs, and I think it's a bad idea.
I don't think we, we did require, we required two-thirds to go to paper ballot, but I don't think we... The vote is the vote.
Okay, so it's just one, one vote?
Yeah. Right? Right? Yeah, because it's not, it's not something that we are... We're just gathering votes anonymously. So those in favor going to paper ballot, please raise your hand. If you want to vote by paper ballot, please raise your hand.
You don't?
If you do, D-O. D-O.
I don't think so. That's okay.
Please announce again. Please announce again. Or we can start over.
So, there has been a request to vote by paper ballot for Article 15 as a block from Item B through O, all those donations. And what I'm looking for is, I need two-thirds of a vote to move this to paper ballot. So all those in favor of voting via paper ballot, please raise your hand. I could tell you don't have two-thirds. We don't have to go negative. We have five people, six people. And all those against, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we will vote... Orally, thank you. For Article 15, Items B through O. All those in favor of donating the funds to these organizations, state aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes appear to have it. And they do. We're now at a final article on today's town meeting day, and that is Article 16. To do any other business that can be properly transacted at this time... One moment, and I'll get to you, Bill. That, one moment. That is items that were not warned. Anything that requires a vote and needs to be warned, we cannot do in Article 16. Bill, you had your hand up first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warner. Wanted to share with everyone here that this year, the planning tradition is revising the town plan. We do this every seven years. It used to be every five years. It's now seven. And the more participation we get from the town in revising the town plan, the more likely we are to actually reflect the majority of town issues and desires. So please look for our meetings. We will be putting them in the agenda section of the town, what do you call the...
Prior.
Town prior, is it?
I don't do it. Can we just...
It's under amendments for the Bakersfield website.
So we're going to plan to have special meetings for those, and we might even do some things to generate some more interest. The last time we revised the plan, we didn't really get much community engagement, and it's really helpful if we do, because there are some things that people want, and some things that people don't want. We don't know them all as a commission, but we'll try to learn about them if we go to a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Sharon hand her hand up, second?
Yeah, I'll be brief. As we were flagging legions this morning, I thought about the fact that 4th of July, our country's 250th anniversary is not this year, but next year, and wouldn't it be cool as a community if we hype things up? It also will be our annual 4th of July fireworks, because it will be on Saturday, so July 4th will be on a Saturday. I assume that's when we're doing it. I'm just putting out there, if anybody is interested, organization or people, like, I need another thing on my plate, but I would love to see this community come out and maybe do a little more than what we've done in recent years. Just a thought. Love to hear from folks at another time. We've got 15 months to plan it, and there's time.
Thank you, Sharon. I saw Hobie was the third person to stand up.
Yeah, Hobie Gage. Last year, they voted in to have the Sheriff's Department come into Bakersfield, and it was put on hold by the Select Board, and nothing has been done yet, and we have no, no Sheriff's Department that comes in. Can you explain to me why?
I don't know if that goes there. At this point, a decent or acceptable contract has not been negotiated. We did talk to the Sheriff's Department. We've also talked with St. Albans City Police. We've reached out to the sheriff in Lemoyle County, and we've also been in contact with Ennisburg, who's talking about starting their own police force. We didn't want to jump into any one particular... We didn't want to jump into a contract that we were going to be regretting. So at this time... So at this time, not spending the money is a better option than spending the money and not getting something we want. Yep, go ahead, Hobie.
Well, I seem to disagree with that because we seem to be having a lot of issues with car breakings, home entering at nighttime and different issues that we're having and we have no protection up here at all. If the town people up here start taking things into their home hands, there's going to be some serious problems.
I don't disagree with that statement at all.
So I feel that you guys should be pushing somewhere to get a contract in because the contract is only good for one year. If you don't like what you've got for one year, you can always go someplace else.
That's questionable depending on the term of the contract, but we, we have been in contact with multiple people and the only one, how can I say this so that it does, I'm just going to say, the only one that is willing to give us a contract at this time is not somebody that this town wants to get into business with. That's as, that's as nice as I can put that.
Okay, sir.
I don't, you know, each his own opinion. I don't feel that's, that's an emergency situation. As my, in my life here in Bakersfield, been multiple times I've called the police and they have not even responded with a return call on a few times of really dangerous situations. So I don't see why I, as a taxpayer, would want to jump into paying, making my taxes go up when I have no faith in that system at all.
Thank you. Gary had his hand up next.
William, we had this Sheriff's Department up there for many years and we figured we weren't getting things done, the sheriffs weren't doing what was being done. So the county just dropped that because they weren't getting the support back. So I'm feeling that same thing that we're going to pay for something that we're not going to get the support of sheriff coverage.
What Sheriff's Department was that? Franklin County, thank you. And I saw Tammy had her hand up next.
Well, I was just saying that I remember when Sheriff's Department came to talk to the board, they were willing to do like a three-month contract so we could try it. And if we didn't, you know, I mean, nothing's done to pursue, but you did have to commit to a year. At that point, I don't know.
Yes?
You'll bear as if you don't recognize my voice. I, I don't know. We've, we've gone through this discussion a number of times over the years and that not only do the state police often not respond, but I don't, some of the contracts that were proposed included a drive-through on the way to Ennisburg as part of their time in the community. And that doesn't make sense to me. And if you think that any Sheriff's Department's going to be here for a nighttime break-in or, or, you know, house crash, then, then, you know, I think you're living in dreamland or in a cop show on TV.
Okay. Kathy, I thought I saw your hand up at one point.
You look nice today.
Is there any, yes, Linda?
Yeah, we can, are we done with, everyone okay with the police contract discussion?
One more person, yes?
It seems to me to me why we need a town council.
Yes, Josh?
So we did look into a town council, hiring somebody much like, well, the only one that I can think of right now is like Island Pond, sending them down to the police training facility and getting them to the level that we would require for them to actually have any authority other than taking your dog if it runs down the road. Would cost the town much more than $50,000 that we were looking into, especially considering you have to take into account, you have to supply that officer with all the equipment, which is the car, all their stuff, and then the insurance liability that would fall back on the town for their actions.
Is that it for the discussion? Yes?
Different topic.
Okay, hang on a moment. Is that it for this discussion? All right.
I don't know. I've got to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Derek, is there not some alternative that we can come up with? I mean, it seems to me this is a bit more dire than some people might be making it out. A woman was just murdered on Rich Cat last year. A boy, Ennisburg near our town line, murdered his parents in a baseball bat. An escaped convict was running down Boy Ridge not too long ago. It seems to me that this might be a little more prescient than we're making it out to be. I'm just curious if there's any way to discuss possible alternatives, granted that finances aren't pretty stifling.
Yes.
Does anybody have any better ideas?
We have looked into multiple other options. The problem we're having right now is nobody, Franklin County, sorry, not Franklin County Sheriff's Department, Lemoyle County Sheriff's Department is not entertaining contracts. The St. Albans Police Department is not entertaining contracts. Vermont State Police does not take contracts. So right now, our only option is Franklin County Sheriff's Department, which we have had multiple, and when I say multiple, I don't mean one or two. We've had multiple entities come to us and say, you do not want to get into a contract with them. So at this point, I don't disagree with you. There are pressing matters. There are definitely issues that are coming far away from outside towns. But as a board, as the people that you have voted to do the best things for our town, throwing $50,000 at a wish is not the best option at this point. We need, we are, we are really hoping that, I think I can share there, maybe Gary could, on the ballot in Ennisburg today, there is a option for a Ennisburg Police Department. I believe they're asking for, Gary, do you know the number?
A little over $300,000.
Little over $300,000 to start their own police department. If they can get traction, it has been offered for us to jump in with them. Now, is it going to cost more than $50,000? I'm going to assume yes significantly, but it seems like it would be something where we would have a little more control than we would if we were to jump in with the Sheriff's Department. We're not, we're not just sitting here going, oh, that was a bad option. Oh, well, that's, that's not the case at all. I hope you guys understand that.
I don't need to assume that.
No, no, no.
I wonder if there are alternatives outside of financing with a task force. Maybe.
Are you saying?
Neighborhood watch, I don't know what.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not going to be in their hands, I think they aren't.
Right. Well, I know, I know how it can be in our hands and that was the concern that was brought up is that it's going to get into our hands and somebody's going to have to make an action to protect their family that nobody in this town really wants. But I, I really, I'm at a loss for words to help you with that, to be honest with you.
Have him first then. Yes, sir.
Those three things that you stated, I don't believe if we had New York City Police equipment, training and everything would have changed the outcome of that because they were, they were home-oriented, neighbor-oriented, really things that would, putting money into a police force would not have changed those items. So I understand your concern and I would say a shotgun at your door, no matter what a policeman tells you, will dissuade way more than worrying about whether you're at risk or not.
Well, I totally want to say that.
Directed towards me.
The gas station's been broken into like three times.
Yes.
I mean, it's just saying, I would assume the word's on the street. This is a kind of an easy target here.
I hear you. Todd, you had your hand up.
So I just want to clarify a few things. You do have a report from the state police on page 32 and 43 in this book. They are responding here. We had them here yesterday for a medical event. There was four troopers here. So they come when they can. You've got to understand, they're protecting Grand Island and Franklin County with a limited number of troopers, mostly because, I'm going to be honest, no one wants to be a trooper today because of society's background on it. You know, you can't do anything without being in a microscope. So finding those new troopers is becoming a hard time. For every one that they lose, they might not get anyone in for four or five years. So it's just unfortunate we're in this societal thing where it's changing the look on law enforcement, but I will tell you, we've met with Lieutenant Philipek, who is the commander of the St. Albans Barracks, and he gives us as much support as he can. And I know, for instance, one of my relatives stopped in and talked directly to him about an incident and got very good action from him on it. So it is out there, they're trying their best. I personally don't want to put my faith in someone that doesn't wear a badge, that has the title of sheriff. That's my personal opinion. And so I think, like Josh said, we're trying to do this and manage the funds so they go where it really gives us the best of them. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Robert Willie, I'd just make two comments. Number one, I do a lot of traveling around Franklin County during whatever and I could count maybe on the number of one hand, you know, on one hand, a number of times I've even seen a sheriff around Franklin County. So I don't know if they have the manpower, the whatever, to be able to do what they're doing as it is. Second point, I think this conversation is had enough today and if you have problems, go to the Select Board meeting and I'm sure the Select Board will be more than happy to take your concerns and do probably what they're doing right now, but I don't think it needs to be discussed.
Thank you. Second that, okay. Yes.
A lot of enforcement agents that did come and talked to you did very much recommend Neighborhood Watch, that people, it's a community that's going to fight this and you really have to come together as a community and be aware of your neighbors, be aware who's at your neighbor's house. Back to the old nosy time when everything was reported in the local, you know, oh, somebody's got a visitor or somebody's got this, that was real and everybody knew what was going on. So that, they both, all of them, strongly encouraged that.
So I'm going to go to Lance and then hopefully, we do have, because he has his hand up before the request to move on. So Lance?
Talking about Vermont State Police, when we had Lieutenant Philipek here, one of the things he stressed is community involvement. You can't just look the other way. If you see something you know is wrong, call the state police. They can't do anything about it if they don't know about it until after the fact. So community involvement, please.
Okay, if we're okay, can we, we're going to move on? Yes, Carol.
So the Bakersfield Conservation Commission would like to take your word.
Okay, give me a moment because there were some people who were waiting that had their hands, I will come back to you. So Kathy had her hand. You want me to go Linda first? Linda, go ahead.
The Cemetery Commission. If anybody's noticed in Maple Grove Cemetery, we have a lot of stones that have fallen over and a lot of that's coming from proceeds. The ground gets saturated in the fall, early winter, frozen for freeze, and in spring, ground's like mush and they get thrown out. We have contacted Vermont Cemetery Association, they are willing to come and work with us this year. They would like 15 volunteers from the town. They would like the town to have some skin to help stand up some of these slab stones and clean stones with the approved E2 cleaner. And so if anybody here would like to do that, give me your name, phone number, and when this all comes together, I will give you a call.
Thank you, Linda. Are we going to Kathy now or are you going to forego and then we'll come to you at the end? Go ahead.
I think it was Linda, so I'm not sure, but I heard that this is our 230th town meeting?
234.
234? I just wanted everybody to know that. In the town of Bakersfield.
The town of Bakersfield, maybe, it's Vermont's 234, so I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I've heard Bakersfield, but whatever. I don't care. It's 234, that's, that's amazing.
Right. Carolyn. Carolyn? Josh, you want to turn your mic for Carolyn?
We are the, your town conservation commission. Pat Evans, Carol LeBrance, thank you. Our newest member, Marissa Salzman, a bundle of energy, Julie Hill, the only other person besides Nikki Kirby who speaks the British accent. And finally, hiding behind both Alice, who does tremendous amount of work as historically. And finally, the old man of the group, Mr. Tree Farm himself. We have her report on page 46. I don't want to take much more of your time. It's toward lunchtime, but I just rattled off a few things, so you know who we are. We're responsible for the park, which is beyond the common, there's a white, which includes a carriage barn and an extra building. We have a trail over there. We have a pollinator garden over there, which Carolyn is the maven of. And we're looking for people who are interested in that sort of thing to join us and help us when we have things going on. We also are responsible for the Shattuck Mountain Trail at number 1331 on the Moreville Mountain Road, which is about a mile of fairly moderate to not so moderate climbing with a spectacular view. We also have just acquired a tree grant, thanks to the work of the regional planning commission, where we're going to plant trees throughout the village, many of the school. We were afraid that wasn't going to happen. In fact, we're warned it probably won't. We also are charged by the Select Board with keeping an eye on the common, which is the big park, as you probably know. And we have volunteers, there are volunteers who want to keep that place looking good and they've done a great job. The Stones, Lisa and Ivan Stone and Ann Mittelstadt, I'm not sure who else should be included, worked very hard for that particular thing. There's a few other things we've, we've been touched on here. And one of our biggest things we're very concerned about is that old carriage barns, you can see it outside the door there. It is stable at the moment. It is old and we think that it would be a great attraction to the town and we think it needs to be brought back to life in some way or another. So we've been working hard to try and get grants. Alex Barkley's helped us with that as a grant writer and we hope to see that place come to life again as a community focus, as a community center. So there we are. And our newest thing I think we want to talk about is the, yes?
We want to, we want to talk about, we've been strongly encouraged to establish a conservation reserve fund in town and on page, I think it's 41.
Karen, if you would hold the mic closer.
Sorry. On page 41, you'll find kind of a summary of what that would be, what it would look like. It was unfortunately, it should have been in the warning, but it didn't get into the warning, so we can't vote on it this year. But we just want to give a heads up that this could be a great benefit to the town because what happens is you have a little, you know, in reserve in a fund, we can use it as matching funds and actually, as you see in the examples, we can procure, you know.
Page 47.
47, on page 47, sorry. It helps to bring in a lot more funds for our projects, potential projects. So we want to just be ready and we'll be hopefully voting on it next year. I want you to know, there's some brochures also that Sharon Evans has printed up. So that's a heads up for next year. It's been a pleasure. It's a pleasure working with these people and it's a feel-good thing. We have a couple of extra places, if anybody wants to volunteer to be a member, we have a lot of fun.
Yes, we do. We meet, we meet the third, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday. Tuesday, whatever. I'm chairman, I know, my finger's red, right on the pulse of this group here, at varying times. Right now it's listed at 5 o'clock, so come join us, see what's happening, maybe take a seat.
Did someone have a question in the back for conservation?
Oh, I was going to ask when the meetings were.
Okay, perfect.
And that, you mean at the library or right here?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Robert?
Yeah, Robert Willie. First off, I would like to give a huge thank you and kudos to our road crew this winter. They have done fantastic job. They have done fantastic jobs. I've found a lot of grief and a lot of whatever with our town through, but, you know, they've done a really fantastic job. Other thing is, I wanted to bring up as a little bit of a concern, the intersection of Route 108 and going onto Academy Lane, pointing to the school. I'm somebody who obviously nearly daily goes to pick up my kids from school and that entrance, and even Academy Lane in general, especially this winter, has been extremely dangerous. It's very, very narrow. I don't know, I mean, it's a town road, so I don't know what the... Whatever is for lengths of roads, but it seems like it is extremely narrow and it's very hard to get in and out and get in traffic. I mean, it's virtually one lane, especially now in wintertime, going down Academy Lane especially, it is one lane, literally driving on the snowbank to have parents going by. So, as that obviously being a town road, not just part of the school, again, it's just kind of a public concern of that road. I don't know, it seems like it's gotten narrower in recent years. I don't know if it really has, but especially that top, I don't know if it's a little curving or whatever, but it's got to be extremely narrow.
Okay. Yes, sir? State your name, please.
Yep. Jay Croft. So, I have a comment and then a question. My comment is, I just think it's great in December when all the common is lit up, the Christmas trees and the lights. I don't know who does it, but I come back from St. Albans, and that's one of the joys of coming back into Bakersfield in December, is to see it all lit up. And I love the little lights that come in like this. Who does it, but they should get credit.
The Willie family.
Huh?
The Willie family.
Willie family?
Yes.
But for a little town, it's really nice to see that lit up and brings a lot of joy, I think, to a lot of people that they don't get their attention. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, in the past, and I'm gonna have to bring it up today, and I'm not sure if this is the form, I might be wrong, but I was wondering what's happening with Greenfield Academy. I mean, we've talked about it in the past. I might be... Well, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know. And I would wonder, I just wonder if somebody could just quote on it or something like that.
Well, let's ask Lance, he's our subject matter expert.
Other than that, I wanna commend Boyd for the hard work.
Lance, can you give a...
Very good attitude. I don't know. Anyway... For 40 years, the building has stood unused. We're actively searching for anyone who wants to take on the project for housing. We're looking for elderly housing if possible, but we're open to other uses as well. There are many possibilities. Right now, I'm at a standstill. I've had two, three interested parties and they have decided that it's not... One says it's not actually feasible for us to do it this year. Another one took on another large project and I haven't heard back from the three, so I'm... If anybody has any ideas at this point, I'm open to suggestions. We are going to put out a statewide advertisement with the help of the Franklin County Northwest Planning Commission and the Franklin County Industrial Development Corps. We're meeting week after next to discuss that, but that's where we are right now. Yes?
Will you phrase that, not whatever funds this year, is that interested parties like interested in the building and just doesn't have the funds this year? Or is it just that they don't have the funds?
Just don't have the funds this year. I am still hoping that one comes back. These will, as a matter of fact, two of them are.
Well, just throwing this out, and I am sure there's a lot to it, but I noticed like in St. Albans, Jim Cameron's revitalized a lot of the buildings.
Jim Cameron's, a lot of the gentleman.
That's great. Oh, great. No, I'm just wondering. Yeah, that's great. I was just pointing it out, but, you know, he's done a lot of work down there.
Yes, he has. He's done some nice work.
Okay. Thank you for your report.
Sir?
I went to a meeting last fall about that and I suggested that we tear the building down for the purpose of taking the building materials, the bricks, the beams and those materials and constructing a much more normal building that would then house our town offices, post office, things like that. Because sooner or later, money's gonna go in that direction anyway.
You are absolutely correct, sir. Eventually, we will have to face the idea of tearing the building down if we can't find the...
I would tear it down for a purpose. Yes, my point.
Voting for a benefactor, right?
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Regarding Brigham?
Nope.
Paul, regarding Brigham?
With the idea of the teardown of Brigham floating here, it's an idea that zoomed through the mind is, instead of demolishing it completely, let's make it into the monument that it's trying to be. And save the tower and some items around it so there's memorabilia there and the rest of it goes away because the other thing that that thing is providing is a lot of hazard right now. And just to add to that, there's a lot of other buildings that the town should be concerned about that need maintenance and the town needs to start addressing all of this and work this into some budgets and some long-range plans to upgrade our buildings and keep them sound and going and working.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else on Brigham? Okay, we had a hand over here, yes?
I'm not sure if it's feasible and I certainly don't mind voting by ballot, but we could just sign in the week of end and they know how many of us we had.
There you go. There you go. Any other comments? Any other business today? Yes, Paul?
John and I had a discussion last year, an item came up with several towns on Franklin County Field Days. That did not go anywhere with all the towns in support of Franklin County Field Days. We're getting driven out of where we are because of the airport expansion in Highgate. And it's looking this year, the board has been feverishly looking for land and they've come up and handed. So, it's looking like this year that Franklin County Field Days, very unfortunately, will not happen. One thing I wanted to mention that's dear in my heart is, the 4H program is exemplified at Franklin County Field Days with their livestock displays and other things that the kids are active with. And to me, that's what should continue out at Franklin County Field Days. And that 4H program, believe me, if we go to history, has been very involved in this town hugely. So, maybe what we could do is kinda monitor this, see where that 4H program goes with Field Days shutting down, and maybe this town could support 4H, just an idea. We're Sharon. She's talking about next year, a big aspect of our fireworks and maybe, just maybe, we could incorporate some of that, excuse me, foreign language, activity with that event. So, just something for everybody to keep in their mind and just keep talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move to adjourn.
Have we moved to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Yes.
Kathy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Thank you, everyone, for coming.